A bunch of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God our Father, Lord God, as we come again saying thank you, Lord, as we are entering this holiday season, continue to keep our cities safe, continue to keep our residents safe, for those that are grieving, continue to cover them during this season, and we thank you for everything that you're doing in Jesus name, amen.
First up, roll call.
Present.
Spitali.
Yeah.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here. Nine President Chambers. Next up, Mayor's address.
Hi, nice to see you. Welcome, everybody. My report for December 9th, 2024. Before I get into the activity log, I want to point out that about a month ago, the City Council rejected the state legislature's police and fire merit system. We presented two resolutions to you for police and fire. You guys voted for both of them. I signed them, which gave our police officers and our firefighters the ability to either accept the merit system that was offered by the state or to reject the merit system that was offered by the state and stay the way we've been operating for 130-plus years in the city of Hammond. And like we thought, the Fire Department officially voted against the state's merit system, 101 to 16. It wasn't even close. So I know the Fire Department's thanking you all for passing that resolution and giving them the ability to soundly vote down what the state was offering. The Police Department will vote on it this week, and if they accept it, obviously, the state's recommendation goes into effect. If they reject it, the system that we've been using for 130 years will continue at the Hammond Police Department. So I did want to point that out. While I'm talking about police and fire, happy to report, I think I reported to the last meeting, we've successfully completed negotiations with FOP 51, and their members have voted more than 90% in favor of a new four-year agreement. We have a ceremony coming up, I think it's this week, where we're going to have the leadership and everybody get together and sign the contract. So fire negotiations with Local 556 continue, but we believe that we are close to extending a formal offer as we work to clean up some language issue regarding the grievance process. One area where we focused on was to retain and attract paramedics, and we feel that we've successfully addressed that issue. Seems like if we were having an issue in the Fire Department, we were losing paramedics, and that's something that we wanted to try to stop, and we did so in this contract. We've extended formal offers for the Teamsters to the Public Works and the Sanitary District, which should be voted on this week. We will be extending a formal offer to water in the next few days. Operating Engineers, the city is ongoing discussions with Operating Engineers Local 399, which represents a small number of park personnel as well of those who run our wastewater plant, the Sanitary District. So anyway, activity log, last couple of weeks since we left seeing each other, Jay Rotzi from Hammond Central came to visit my office shortly after Veterans Day. They had an entire ceremony, gave me an award for Veterans Day, which was really sweet, so I wanted to say thank you to them. Met with Indianapolis attorneys and the leadership of the Hammond Sanitary District regarding Hammond Sanitary District's long-term control plan. I talked to you all about it last meeting. In light of the changing administrations in Washington, DC, it's an interesting question, and we know that we have about $300 million in liabilities coming up in the Hammond Sanitary District. So it's interesting that with President Trump shortly about to take over, his view of the Environmental Protection Agency is obviously a lot different than President Biden's was. So talking to our attorneys about whether we should try to appeal our consent decree and see if there's any type of relief we could save our taxpayers. So trying to make lemons out of lemonade, but it was an interesting meeting. If anybody has any questions about it, I'm willing to talk to you about that. It's an issue that affects all of us and councils in the future and mayors in the future. So it's obviously very important. Attended the Gene Shepherd Center's VIP pickleball party. We had a grand, sort of a grand opening, attended by all the sponsors, some elected officials. I know Council President was there, so it was good to see you out there. Holiday Christmas tree lighting ceremony was here at City Hall, and Councilman Barry was out there, as he is every year. Definitely the coldest, probably the coldest ceremony I've had in Hammond. I've been to, and I've been mayor for a long time. It was really, really cold that day, so the crowd was very small sometimes. And, you know, the staff works real hard to put it on, and it's sort of sad to see a small crowd show up, but it was a small, energetic crowd. We had reindeers. Obviously, the lights are on. So Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. Attended the visitation for one of our employees, Steve Fowler, who passed away. Steve was the former superintendent of Hammond's Recycling Department. He was currently employed with the Department of Public Works. A lot of people remember Steve from the years he spent at WJIB. Very young to lose Steve Fowler. Good employee. We're going to miss him a lot. Attended the police captain's monthly meeting, monthly. Met with the owners of the Branding Room Floor Marketing Agency, ideas that they had to better market our city. Met with multiple people familiar with operations at Hammond Fire Department in regards to an open Assistant Chief position we have currently in the Hammond Fire Department. Ed Lameli recently retired. He's off the books at the end of the year. So the Assistant Chief is the quarterback on the department. It's the chief in charge of all the firefighters when everybody goes home. So it's an important, it's an important position that's open. Sworn to new class of firefighters. Had the Christmas parade in the Woodmore Section of Hammond. South Shore event in the city hosted by the SSCVB. Was in downtown Chicago over the weekend. Hammond had over 25 people from the administration and from the council there. It was a good teamwork and good to see everybody show up. And today, just got back from the Indiana Conference of Mayors. They were very interested in our gas station ordinance. They're very proud of us, and there was a room of 70 mayors getting briefed by me today on the ordinance that we passed a little over a year ago. So very interesting. I know you guys have a lot before you today. We have an APRA cleanup ordinance that's before you regarding about $370,000 that needs to be appropriated before the end of the year, and Megan has some ideas I know you guys have talked about. You have a, we're calling it the Omni-Bus Permit Administrative Ordinance that's coming before you, with just some miscellaneous fees that are going up towards the end of the year, and the ordinance ratifying the actions of the Board of Public Works and Safety is coming before you as well. There's a few that pass. So if anybody has any questions, I'm here. Other than that, sorry about the long report. It's been busy.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Next up, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
So we approve the November 25th minutes from the meeting and place them on file?
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, approval of claims.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims dated November 20th, 2024, and ending with claims dated December 4th, 2024. Claim number 10334 through claim number 10670, inclusive in the amount of $4,387,053.90, I so move.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Warple. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Approval of claims passes 9-0. Public hearings, we have none today. Communications.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Last week, I attended the services for Mr. Keith Speaks, who was a Emma High graduate and former executive director of Neighborhoods Inc. here in Hammond. Passed away unexpectedly. Just want to give, once again, give his family our condolences. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
The Capitol Improvement Board met 12-24. We considered three items. Item A, funding allocation number 223, Summer Street Reconstruction Change Orders 1 through 4, Reef Riley Construction Company in the amount of $19,753.44. Item B, funding allocation number 224, Citywide Protestory and Bridge Inspection EGS in the amount of $43,200. Item C, funding allocation number 225, EV charging station site, NICE Engineering in the amount of $12,680. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yes, council as a whole will be bringing out 2429 and 2430.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President.
Yes.
The upcoming Crime Watch meetings. On Tuesday, December 2nd, Irving Community Watch will meet at 9:30 a.m. at Irving School, and the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, December 12th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. As I say at every meeting, community is not just about me, it's about us. So from all of us at Crime Watch, we wish all of you happy holidays and a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee report is closed. Next up, ordinance, third reading, final passage.
2429, an ordinance creating a new fund, Fund 2486, for the fiscal year 24, Law Enforcement, Mental Health and Wellness Act Implementation Projects, awarded to City of Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I move for final passage of 2429.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
This is simply creating a line item for the Controller for the $200,000 grant that was awarded the Hammond Police Department for Law Enforcement, Mental Health and Wellness.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2429 passes 9-0.
2430, an ordinance creating a new fund, Fund 2487, for the fiscal year 24, COPS Technology and Equipment Program, awarded to the City of Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2430.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Council.
This simply establishes a line item for the Controller for a grant that was awarded the Hammond Police Department in the amount of $350,000 for technology and equipment.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2430 passes 9-0. And that will be the, that'll be the last of our final passage of ordinances. Next up, introduction of ordinances.
2431, an ordinance fixing the salaries for elected city officials for the City of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January 1st, 2025, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for passage on first and second reading with a council as a whole meeting on December 30th at 5:15.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2431 passes on first and second reading.
2432, an ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city 2024 budgets.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2432, with the council as a whole meeting at 5:15 on December 30th.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2432 passes 9-0 on first and second reading.
2433, an ordinance to further appropriate from the ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act, version 4.0.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for passage on first and second reading, put in council as a whole on December 30th at 5:15 p.m. with a public hearing on December 30th.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Council.
As the mayor said, and as remarks, we have about $370,653.80 remaining on the ARPA money. That has to be obligated by 2024 and spent by 2026. And the Controller's Office is recommending that $270,000 be used for server upgrades that are needed by the IT Department, and the remaining $89,000, $99,000, whatever it is, be allocated for recycling, landfill, and overlays to cover general cost overruns on these issues and our appropriate uses under the ARPA Act.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2433 passes first and second reading, 9-0.
2434, ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana, to issue one or more series of its economic development revenue bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto YMCA project.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Tyler.
I move for first and second passage of ordinance 24-34.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Salinas. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Council.
As we discussed in caucus, this is in alignment with the development agreement that we have with Crossroads YMCA for bond payment not to exceed $6 million for our contribution to the building of the new YMCA. Along with first and second passage, also refer to caucus as a whole with a 5:15 committee meeting on 12-30. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2434 passes 9-0 on first and second reading.
2435, an ordinance respecting and ratifying the actions of the City of Hammond Board of Public Works and Safety related to traffic regulation for 2024.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I may move for passage on first and second reading.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
This is an ordinance that basically we are just ratifying actions taken by the Board of Public Works over the last year when it is related to traffic regulation for 2024. And I think there's three actions that were taken. Couple of stop, or stop sign, and no parking sign, and...
President only.
One-way, something like that. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2435 passes 9-0 on first and second reading.
2436, an ordinance amending ordinances 3601, 3947, 4304, 4307, 4678, 4880, 4951, 8383, 8435, 8552, 8602, 8779, 8781, 8814, 8821, 8887, 8888, 8889, 9197, 2901, 29, I'm sorry, 9201, 9206, 9208, and 9446, also known as sections 32.49, 94.061, 94.062, 150.025, 150.045, 150.058, 151.51, 150.125, 150.058, 154.40, and 156.20 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to certain fees and procedures relating to building contractors and waste hauling and administrative services provided by the Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for passage on first and second reading with the council as a whole on December 30th at 5:15 p.m.
Second.
The second by Councilman, it's Councilman Salinas. Right. Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
There was a lot of numbers here, and I commend Carmen for reading them all out without making a mistake. But basically, what this does is, we, it's been about five years since we looked at building fees and inspection fees and stuff like that, waste hauler fees, and we brought the cost more in line with what it costs to do business and what other communities charge for these services, and we can get into detail during the committee hearing on 12:30.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2436 passes 9-0 on first and second reading. So is that what we got? All we have for ordinances, introduction of ordinances, correct? All right, next up, resolutions.
24R-21, a resolution adopting a supplemental community investment plan, version 4, for the City of Hammond for the use of funds provided under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for adoption of resolution 24R-21.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Council.
This is a resolution adopting the community investment plan of version 4 of the ARPA money, which we described, and will have to be passed by ordinance.
Thank you.
This is a resolution adopting the community investment. I'll get it.
Thank you, Council. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 24R-21 passes 9-0.
24R-22, a resolution of the Hammond Common Council approving the First Amendment to Development Agreement among the City of Hammond, Indiana, and the City of Hammond Redevelopment Commission, the City of Hammond Economic Development Commission, and Crossroads Young Men's Christian Association.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Tyler.
I move for passage of resolution 24R-22.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Council.
This is for payment of a joint parking lot that would be utilized for the sportsplex, the new YMCA, as well as additional parking for the old Walmart building that's on our property as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Sorry, Mr. President, I'll just add that the total amount is just under $475,000, and it'll be paid from the central tip. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Sorry, Mr. President, I'll just add that the total amount is just under $475,000, and it'll be paid from the central tip. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Twenty-four R twenty-two passes nine zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kelwinski.
This is a reappointment to the Redevelopment Commission. Suzette served a year last year and is requesting to serve another year. Served well, and that's why I put her back up. Thank you.
So you've made a motion for the resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Twenty-four twenty-three passes nine zero, resolution. Next up, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman War.
As the mayor stated during his address, we had the funeral for Steve Fowler a week ago Monday, and just want to commend his coworkers for outside the building, the church. We paid a nice tribute to him by lining up as the hearse went by and all that. I would also like to express the council's condolences to Isabel Escobedo on the passing of her husband, Joe Escobedo. I don't think anybody in politics doesn't know who Joe was, and he passed away, I believe, Monday. And then also, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and one last thing, I know Ken's brother, who I've known for about thirty years, that Ken speaks in front of us, is falling on some hard times, so I want to wish him well too, Ken.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I also want to wish our secretary a happy birthday, Elizabeth Reyes. She's a big help in the office, behind the scenes for us all, so happy birthday, Liz.
You.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just as we enter the holiday season, just continuing to keep, you know, everyone in our thoughts and prayers are going through something this season. We know that things get harder during this time, but definitely want to keep them uplifted, that even in this season, continue to remember to laugh, live, and love everyone around because it is a hard time, but that is my deepest prayer for them. So Merry Christmas, and we'll see you at the next one.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I believe, as well as Liz's birthday, Councilwoman Vines just celebrated her birthday too, so happy birthday to her.
Number's getting too big, Barry. Thank you.
They both turned thirty, right?
Yes.
I know Jake Jacobs will be celebrating a birthday soon, as well as Clerk Golick too, correct? All right, so happy birthday to all of our December birthdays. And, Mr. President, I would also like to make a motion to reappoint Greg Myrick to the Redevelopment Commission for a one-year appointment, which would expire December first, December thirty-first, 2025.
Second.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Like I said, this is a reappointment. I think he's been on there at least six or seven years, maybe even longer. I talked to him, he said he wants to do one more year. I know he's a, he's been a real contribution to the Redevelopment Commission, so we'll be sad to see him go when he does transition away from this board, but thank you, Mr. Myrick. I know you're probably watching at home for your contribution, and look forward to working with you for another year.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. That passes nine zero. Greg Myrick. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and finished business is closed. Next up is public expression. I know, notice we have some regulars and several other new people that have signed up for public expression. I want to remind you, you need your name and address, and you're allowed to speak for three minutes. First up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, Council. Thank you, Councilman Warple. Appreciate that. The Briar East Woods documentary came out a couple of weeks ago. So far, we had two packed houses and one standing ovation. I don't know if any of you's seen it yet, but it's really good. It's really good. I never saw it ahead of time, so I was really surprised. We are so proud of Jana for putting that together. She did a really great job. She did a wonderful job tackling all of the issues. The documentary is being submitted now to film festivals around the world. She is traveling the world right now. She was in Sicily, and she is currently in Bethlehem. The Hesfeld Doodusters now has over 1,500 followers. A post last week for one of our cleanups got 800 likes and over 133,000 views. I guess you could say it went viral. There's a video of Cub Scouts that visited also, that are, that is currently doing the same thing. We are gaining support because we know this is the right thing to do. You might wonder why we do what we do. It's simple, because we care about the neighborhood and the future. We have no hidden agenda. We are caring good people, and we do all of this for free. We do this knowing with extreme confidence that we are doing the right thing. There is no question, your city, your city bridge going through the woods will lower our quality of life. We should be embraced, not evaded, ignored, or attacked. If I weren't sure we were doing the right thing, I wouldn't waste my time. I consider my time very valuable, especially in my old age now. Believe me, I would much rather be at home watching TV or in my backyard having a beer, listening to some Dead and feeding the squirrels. Instead, I'm in this place every other week, trying to convince you all about what really matters, the quality, quality of life in this town. This is the only place we are allowed to speak and not get interrupted. I wish you could all respond to us. Maybe we could actually get somewhere, if we could ask questions and you could actually answer them. But we can't even speak to you in the hallways half the time. Why is the city opposed to discussion? I think it's pretty obvious. You get into a discussion, they don't want to answer the questions.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, everybody.
Next up, Casey King.
Hi, Council.
Your name and address?
Six thirty-two Burton Court. It's Whiting, but it's Robertsdale.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Casey King. I'm a freelance artist and designer. I'm also a founding member of Whiting-Robertsdale Environmental Neighbors, and a 2011 grad of Hammond Area Career Center. Scott was my principal. I've been assisting in the advocacy of the Briar East Woods. We now have T-shirts, bumper stickers, buttons, yard signs, and we are circulating Jana's documentary amongst environmental organizations, universities, legislators, and the public at large. We're also touring the film throughout Northwest Indiana and beyond. The details of this blatant disregard of public and environmental safety by the City of Hammond are being put forth to the public. Our second showing of the film at Paul Henry's Art Gallery in downtown Hammond was met with great attendance and applause. The story is spreading, and it is your responsibility as public servants to address this. One of the most powerful moments in the film comes from the footage of Mayor McDermott stating the following in regards to his governor's parkway plan. This was from Mayor's Night Out in 2023, and I quote, "The kids that walk there, they're still going to have to walk. They're still going to have to go through the train unless they walk the long way. And I realize that is probably not going to happen with kids. I agree, that's the weakness. The kids that walk are still going to have the temptation to go through trains." Mr. Warple, several council meetings ago, you spoke in response to a resident who had expressed opposition to the proposed wheel tax. You said something to the matter of there being no straightforward solutions to problems in this city, and we understand that. However, in the case of Briar East Woods, it is clear as day, both an over or underpass at Grand Avenue provide a straight roadway, a shorter roadway, bypassing the train tracks and effectively providing the safety for kids that this entire project exists to solve. These solutions also allow the ancient dune woodlands, the last of its kind unproductive in the entire state of Indiana, to remain, as opposed to the city's plan of a two-mile winding roadway through the historically significant Briar East Woods, which, as I read, the mayor himself has stated, this roadway will cause kids to still, and I quote again, "have the temptation to go through trains." The mayor has admitted that his governor's parkway plan doesn't actually solve the problem it was set out to solve. So I suppose you're right, that doesn't fit the definition of a straightforward solution, does it? There are straightforward solutions to this project, though. They have been presented to you going on three years now. You, the city, are not being straightforward with the public, so we are left to believe that this is not, that the straightforward solutions presented to you do not make sense or lack logical reasoning, but instead, they do not make sense. C E N T S, money, city income, tax revenue, as opposed to directly, straightforwardly solving public safety for our kids, the sole reason this project exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Casey. Next up, George Steyer.
What I want to know is, looking over, I did a minor bit of research on some of the incentives that are being offered, the quantum corridor and digital, I forget the other part of it, that's run by Dan Dockage and those guys on the lakefront there, and I know the mayor's pushing it, and I know that it has to be incentivized, but my God, we're giving away, it's like giving away our firstborn. They don't pay any sales tax on their personal property purchases or their purchases of power. Now, currently, we have NIPSCO wanting to raise rates up to $45 a month on people, and I wonder if they're connected in some way, shape, or form, because that electrical data center is going to, is going to draw a lot of power. And are we paying for that too, on top of the incentives that we're already giving them? I mean, it's not just a sales tax, it's in addition to that. I'm sure the city's offered deferments on taxes or whatever else is in the bag of tricks there, and so I just wondered if this council is going to explain some of this to us, and if so, and if, and if there's, and if we're being, if we're being asked to fund NIPSCO's, I guess, new infrastructure because, and power needs, are you guys going to come to bat for us? When they start asking for more money, because obviously with the tax incentives, the sales tax incentives, they're not going to be taxed on the power. So who's going to make up for that? You know who it is, it's us. So I would just wish you would look into it and consider what you could do for your fellow citizens, and maybe earn some of that money you guys are just giving yourself, huh? Thank you.
Thank you, George. Next up, Terry Steigl.
Start the clock already?
Nope, not yet. You want me to? Hurry up. All right.
I'm Terry Steigl. I live in eighty-five seventy-seven Climen Road in Highland, Indiana, and I'd like to say good evening to everybody on the council and everybody in the audience. I guess, you know, little things that have been going on are sort of bothering me, so I think the council has a responsibility and a duty to represent the public interest of the citizens and protect the city's property. And Hammond's done some real good things, and they've done some real bad things, okay? So it's probably this time of year to reflect on and make some amendments for the coming year, and I guess, you know, it's James Carville, the politician, you know, he's always got this famous quote, you know, "It's the economy, stupid," you know? And then I guess when you, when you got, when you start looking at some things in your community, you start thinking about what Mother Earth would say. And Mother Earth would say, "It's the environment, stupid." So we need to, need to take that into consideration in our decisions, because if we look at the Grand Cayman that I grew up by, Congress, Councilor Salinas lives over there, so he knows, it was a toxic pit at one time, and the city made their fair contribution to the pollution there. And once they got what they call fourteen areas of concern from the EPA, they were able to get federal money for a superfund. So we want to make sure that stays, gets better and not worse too, and we don't continue doing things that could harm that too. The next thing is the Little Cayman River. We have a problem there. The mayor has opposition to the consent decree that we've all agreed to, and the judge hasn't changed it yet, and he's, last council meeting, I think he threatened to stop the project if he could, and tonight he said he's looking to maybe amend that, and I just want to let you know, Highland's already started their part. They've put their 70 million, they've allocated the 70 million to get the project started, and, and, and the, and construction has already started. So this is, you know, we, we don't need to keep polluting, so we need to do things to create the environment that we need for all of our citizens. And then you also need to take a look at the, the Old State Line Generating Site. You know, there hasn't been enough oversight there as far as what goes on there, and I think you need to look into this, and Counselor Kelwinski, you might want to take note, you know, back in 2013, Mr. Beemsterbor claimed he was going to do a clean closure, and he repeated that a few times, at least until I know until 2018. And I don't think there was ever a clean closure. There might have been a clean cover-up, but I don't think there's a clean closure, because a clean closure, if you look at the CCR 2015 rules, would outline how that's done. You'd have test wells, you'd have borings and all kinds of things to make sure things are cleaned out properly. Now, they did remove 202, uh, truckloads of coal ash.
Thank you, Terry. Next up, TJ Gerdig.
It's good to see you again. So I just wanted to bring this back around to the beginning and ask, you know, how, how do we get started with this project? If you look at the grant application, it's to help kids safely walk to school if there's a parked train, and I'm sure if you guys heard that, that there was a solution to that, I'm sure you guys were all on board, as would anyone, any reasonable person. But, you know, as you know, and as Casey pointed out, it clearly doesn't solve the problem, the mayor admitted it himself. So then, maybe you heard, "Oh, well, you know what? We already got the money. We're never going to get it again, so we, we have to jump on this opportunity." But then, you know, we reached out to the FRA, and they said, "Well, no, Hammond is a, a high priority with kids walking to school, and so if you guys have a better solution, you're at the top of our list for receiving additional funding." And so that's not quite true, is it? So at this point, the city council has taken no steps to pause this project, to look at other alternatives, to say, "Hey, maybe we should hear out our community who is crying out and saying, 'We don't want this project.'" Governor's Parkway, destroying Briar East Woods. So if you have not taken any steps to prevent this, then I have to agree that you, that I have to assume that you guys are in support of this project, because it's moving forward. And, you know, I need you guys to help us out here in Hammond. If there's something that you have reservations about, about pausing this project, please talk to me, because we've come up here for years, trying to give you the details of this, and it's, it's kind of driving me crazy to saying the same thing over and over again. And so if you guys have any questions, let me know, because we need to get this taken care of. I don't know why you guys are still in support of this bridge. It's driving me crazy. All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, TJ. Next up, Grace Defala.
It's pronounced Tafoya, and my address is 3380 Burris Street, Gary, but I attend school at Purdue, and I also work in the City of Hammond. I work in the City of Hammond planting a lot of the trees for the nonprofit and Student Conservation Association, and I worked all this past summer in the burning blistering heat because there's barely any trees in the City of Hammond. I noticed that there was nothing but clear skies and barely any trees, except for the ones that SCA has been planting for the past six years. I checked online in Lake County... I checked online in Lake County's 2023 report and said that you only have about 16% of tree canopy coverage in all of Hammond. That means that you're costing people extra on heating and cooling in the summer times when they don't have shade. You're costing yourself extra in the wintertime when you get all of this ground cover and snow and you don't have leaves or trees to prevent that. And you're making the community ugly by not having any trees. They improve value and cities like Whiting with these huge trees in every, in every residential area make the city look beautiful. And Whiting has the money because they're polluted by BP, but you guys get the pollution too, and it's important for us to take care of the little bit of environment we do have left. And I brought more people out this evening because I, this is something I really care about, this is something they care about, and you are the public's connection to the city government. The public is telling you now that they want to save Briar East Woods and you need to find a compromise. It is your job. I, planting trees throughout Hammond have seen that the soil is really bad quality. It doesn't soak up water, it has barely any life in it, and it's because most of Hammond is developed and just ugly. And I have been planting a native garden at Morton High School not far from Briar East Woods, and just with the few little plants that I have planted, so much life has come into those gardens. And there's so much life in Briar East Woods that you are taking a home away from that I was here before you were. This is something super important to us and we're going to keep coming back until you work with us. You are tired of hearing us? Then speak to us and come to a compromise. Stop just pushing your own agenda. It's the people's agenda. This is a democracy, not your city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've worked with that organization, you're with, they're very good. We appreciate them. Next up, Anthony Higgs.
Good evening. Anthony Higgs, 1123 Moore Street, Hammond, Indiana, 46320. Former councilman of the 3rd District of the City of Hammond, preaching commitment for over 30 years. My concern is that I, they had a meeting last week in reference to NIPSCO. There are a number of people that are really suffering throughout this entire city that are struggling. I would hope that you all, especially the councilmen from the 3rd District and their large members, would get involved in this process, if nothing else but send a letter to the Regulatory Commission in regards to the increase of NIPSCO. People are struggling and the funds are going to be cut short as it relates to North Township and Canyman Township. So if NIPSCO goes up 22%, people are going to be struggling on paying their medications, getting their medications, or trying to pay your utility bill. Please help in this respect. That's all I can say. That's all I know. They need help. I would hope that you step up to the plate, because I know all those people that were doing all the other mess when I was on councilman, they're not going to speak up on the issues that affect the community and the city as a whole. But I'll continue to fight till I die.
Thank you, Anthony. There are a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I didn't get, I didn't know you were supposed to sign in.
Okay.
My name's Andrea Sunters and I live at 6804 Idaho Avenue in Hammond, and I moved here in 2016, and I remember when I was coming, I have two German shot birds and I'm disabled, and I was coming out of the woods and I see Mayor McDermott and Frank Mervin, and they were looking for voters in the city of Hammond and asked me if I was able to vote, and I said I was, and they, and I let them know I was new to the community, and they asked me if there was anything I would want to have done in the community, what would that be? And I would be, and I immediately told them to have those woods cleaned out because it's a really nice area for me to be able to walk my dogs and now that the taxes and the prices of everything have gone up, I can't only walk so far and I can't afford more than one tank of gas a week. So to be able to walk to the woods there and sit there and have communion or fellowship with my friends and stuff and other people that I see go through there as well, like the Boy Scouts and other people walking their dogs or the kids riding and that has been there for so, like over 14,000 years. I was trying to do some research on when it receded back there and, you know, I, I have a soft place in my heart for that and displacing all of those animals is really disturbing to me as well, because where are they going to go? Each tree provides, one tree provides oxygen for three people. So all of those trees in there, they're not just, you know, taking up space, they're actually something we enjoy walking through and talking to each other and having pizzas even delivered out there where we're playing music, and we clean that up ourselves. Every two years, we, we have a cleaning done where we get 18 to 20 bags of garbage out of there and we're willing to do it and take care of it, but, you know, we, I, since I've been here, the quality of my life is now starting to go down because, you know, everything is so much more expensive and now the places that I get to go, I mean, I'm going to start walking in the cemetery, because that's the only other place that is kind of like country to me. I really enjoy walking through those woods and I enjoy seeing the animals there and taking pictures and watching the birds, and I know a lot of other people that enjoy that as well. And I think that with, along with everybody else, you guys should be thinking about the community and not just, you know, what benefits you're going to get out of it.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.